Let us know that they're good to go. You are the co-host of this meeting. We are recording. It is six fifty. You do have a quorum of the board. I think you're good to go.
All right. Thanks Pam.
You're welcome.
Welcome to the Amherst Planning Board Meeting of October sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. My name is Doug Marshall and as Chair of the Amherst Planning Board, I am calling this meeting to order at six fifty P M. This meeting is being recorded and is available live stream via Amherst Media. Minutes are being taken. Pursuant to chapter twenty of the Acts of two thousand and twenty-one and extended by chapter two of the Acts of two thousand and twenty-three, this planning board meeting, including public hearings, will be conducted via remote means using the Zoom platform. The Zoom meeting link is accessible on the meeting agenda posted on the town website's calendar listing for this meeting, or go to the planning board webpage and click on the most recent agenda where the Zoom link is listed at the top of the page. No in-person attendance of the public is permitted. However, every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access the meeting in real time via technological means. In the event we are unable to do so, let's see, in the event we are unable to provide meeting access due to economic hardship or despite best efforts, we will post an audio or video recording, transcript or other comprehensive record of the meeting on the town website as soon as feasibly possible. Board members, I will take a roll call. When I call your name, unmute yourself, answer affirmatively and return to mute. Bruce Coldem.
I am here.
Lawrence Clutz.
I am here.
Jesse Major.
Present.
Fred Hartwell.
I am present.
Johanna Newman.
Present.
Karen Winter.
Present.
And I Doug Marshall am present. Thank you all. Board members, if technical issues arise, we may need to pause to fix the problem and then continue the meeting. If the discussion needs to pause, it will be noted in the minutes. Please use the raise hand function to ask a question or make a comment, and I will call on you to speak. After speaking, remember to remute yourself. To the general public, the general public comment item is reserved for public comment regarding items not on tonight's agenda. Please be aware, the board will not respond to comments during general public comment period. Public comment may also be taken at other times when deemed appropriate by the planning board chair. Please indicate you wish to make a comment by clicking the raise hand button when public comment is solicited. If you have joined the Zoom meeting using a telephone, please indicate you wish to make a comment by pressing star nine on your phone. When called on, please identify yourself by stating your full name and address and put yourself back into mute when finished speaking. Residents can express their views for up to three minutes or at the discretion of the planning board chair. If a speaker does not comply with these guidelines or exceeds their allotted time, their participation may be disconnected from the meeting. Okay, time is six fifty-three. We have all board members present. And we'll start with minutes. We have one set of minutes, the minutes from August twenty-first available for our approval and any edits that people want to suggest. Does anyone have any suggested edits or other comments on these minutes? Okay, Bruce.
I wasn't sure. Folks can advise here, but I'm quoted at the bottom of page two, or I'm referenced at the bottom of page two as citing that seventy D B is quiet. And what I meant to say is quiet for a bar. And do we think we need to be specific about that because we're talking about a bar, but because seventy D B is not quiet, it's just quiet in the context of a bar.
Yeah, I think it would make more sense if we added the for a bar.
Yeah. Anyway, that's that was the only comment that I had, and apart from that, I would move acceptance of the minutes.
I'll second that motion with the edit that you made.
Got it.
Sorry Jesse, I just went ahead and did it. Anybody else have any other comments? I'm not seeing any. All right, why don't we just go through and get the minutes approved out of the way? Start with you Bruce.
Aye.
And Fred?
Aye.
Jesse?
Aye.
Johanna?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
Lawrence?
Aye.
And I'm an I as well. So that's seven in favor, no abstentions and no nays. Motion passes. All right, moving along. Item number two, time is six fifty-five and time now for public comment. Let me change my view here. I see fourteen attendees of the public. I usually read their names as I can see them, and I will do so now. I see Aiden Lee, Aiden Sabina, Barry Roberts, Dean Gendron, Gail Flood, Gail Flood again, Justin Smith, Ken Rosenthal, Maggie Smith, Mara Keen, Melanie St. John, Mike Thomas, Sarah Barr and Tom Reedy. All right, I know a number of those people are here for our hearing later. Are there any members of the public who would like to make a public comment about something not on tonight's agenda at this time? Okay, I am not seeing any hands from any members of the public. I guess I will conclude that there are none this evening. Last call for public comment. Okay. Pam, we advertised the public hearing to start at seven oh five.
That is correct.
So we, so if I start, if we start now, we'd be a few minutes in advance of the advertisement?
Yes.
All right, so in that case, why don't we skip down to another part of the agenda? We can see if we can go through some of our standard boilerplate here for a few minutes. I see Nate Malloy has joined us. And far as you know Pam, are there any old business not reasonably anticipated forty-eight hours in advance?
No.
How about new business?
No.
Are there any upcoming Form A and R subdivision applications that you might want to give us a preview of?
We do have one of those. No, and no. So do bear with me. I believe I put this in your packet. Okay. So this A and R is whoops, what happened here? Is for property known as forty Valley. It's Valley View Lane, I believe, right here, Valley Lane. And then this is Berkshire Terrace. So what is happening is the owner of Valley Lane is purchasing this very small piece of property right here from his neighbor on Berkshire Terrace. Am I right Nate, or am I saying that backwards? No, yes, this is going away.
Yeah.
This right here is going away. And is being added to Berkshire Terrace. So let me show you the other.
I believe there was a survey drawing too.
Yeah, there is.
And that showed it more clearly.
I'm not gonna, whoops, oh no, hold on, bear with me.
I could share it quickly.
Okay Nate, if you can, that's great. There it is.
Yeah, so it's the little rectangle.
It's this little area, so it's like, you know, forty by ten feet is being added to the, or you know, added or removed, however you want to say it, from a property.
And is that a paper street that's running up and down on the page?
It's a sewer easement.
Okay.
And we have.
So both properties have frontage. I presume whatever, maybe it's irrelevant whether there's the adequate size circle for the house since there's already a house.
Right.
At least on one of the properties. So approval is not required under the subdivision by law. And the question for the board is whether anybody objects to my signing this, the statement that approval is not required on behalf of the board. Bruce, I see your hand.
I don't think I do Doug, but I'm curious as to, I mean, I think we could all learn something by knowing why such a intricate and small adjustment is being made in the property. Is this to give a few extra square feet so it becomes a duplexable property, or is, what's the purpose?
That's probably it.
That's probably it, okay, but you don't know necessarily.
I mean, I think that could be it, but I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Okay.
I mean, yeah, I mean, it's an, it's an odd shape anyways for the property. At some point, it seems like property lines were rearranged in the past, and so now they're, they're being changed again.
Well, it's also a little odd that they're not squaring the whole boundary off.
Right.
Yeah. They're tracking the easement along. Do we know who the easement's in favor of?
You mean the sewer easement?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm, I was pretty sure it's for the town.
Okay. I suppose that would be true if it's not otherwise stated. I know we have an easement, the sewer easement going across our parcels, the co-housing parcels, and that's favored, that's, that's for W G Coles.
Right.
All right, you all set Bruce?
Yes, thank you.
All right, Fred?
Yeah, this is it's gonna change the property size to an even twenty-six thousand, which I think qualifies it for an additional occupancy.
Yeah, an additional unit.
Yeah, so that's pretty clear that's what's gonna happen. And I don't see any reason for it not to happen, but anyway.
Right, I mean, if you look at the neighborhood, the lots are really small, so it's not, you know, if there are another unit here, it's actually just in keeping with the pattern of the neighborhood.
Yeah, but that's not really the question in front of us.
No, you know, is this transfer of three hundred and ninety-one square feet, you know, can that be allowed through the A and R process?
Right. And I presume Nate, that you, you and your staff think that the answer is yes.
Yes.
Okay. All right, well, so Pam, you did not have this on the agenda. You brought this up as an upcoming, or were you expecting us to vote on this this evening?
Well, I am expecting you to take a vote on it this evening. I will say, however, that I haven't heard from the town engineer, which to me is unusual. He usually turns these right around for me. And I haven't heard from him. So if you do decide that you are gonna go ahead and allow the chair to endorse this plan, you, you might want to add the caveat based on comment from the town engineer.
Or that you're all okay with me not signing, but after we hear from the town engineer. He doesn't have any objections. I mean, it's a recollection that we don't do actual formal votes on this. It's usually more of a consensus conversation. Like, does anybody object? And if nobody really raises an objection, we just move on. So I guess in that case, I'll just ask formally now, does anybody object to my doing, to my signing this on behalf of the board? Approval not required, but not until we hear from the town engineer that he has no objections. And obviously, if he has some objections, we'll probably bring it back. Nate?
Yeah, this was filed though at the end of September, so we, we only have, you know, a limited number of time to act unless we ask, you know, the applicant to extend it. So, you know, we only have, you know, essentially this, the rest of this week to act, I think, you know, business days, you know, because then it's the weekend, so.
All right, so you think we need to act even if we haven't heard from the town engineer?
Well, or it's just, you know, it's constructively granted, and so.
Yeah. Okay, does anybody object to me just approving it?
In one days.
Right, so it's.
Okay, all right, I'm not hearing any objection. Fred? You are muted.
I'm not objecting, but I would appreciate it Nate, if you could talk to the town engineer and explain that there was some consternation at the level of the planning board because we did not hear a report from him. And maybe we'll hear something at our next meeting. I don't think this should pass. Yes, I mean, if it's gonna be constructively granted, of course, we're gonna not get in the way of that. But I want the town engineer to know that the lack of any communication from him was duly noted.
Yeah, I can do that. I mean, I'm looking online right now and, you know, the, you know, there is the sewer easement, it looks like there's a manhole on the property, and so, you know, whether or not any development happens, they have to, you know, stay clear of that easement, and I don't, I can't see that there's any other issues with that property in terms of, you know, town utilities. Sometimes, you know, it might be that the researching what's there, but I think it's pretty well documented in that neighborhood, so I can relay those thoughts.
All right. Thank you, board members. And Pam, I guess you and I need to make an appointment to get together for me to sign.
We do.
All right. Okay, we've successfully filled our our time to get us past seven oh five. Time now is seven oh eight. So we'll come back to the public hearing that is advertised for tonight. Let's see. Okay, in accordance with the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter forty-eight, this public hearing has been duly advertised and notice thereof has been posted and is being held for the purpose of providing the opportunity for interested citizens to be heard regarding S P R two thousand and twenty-five dash zero five, South Pleasant LLC, South Pleasant Street LLC, forty-five fifty-five South Pleasant Street. Request site plan review approval under section three point three two five of the zoning bylaw to amend previously approved S P R two thousand and twenty-four dash zero five, including modifying the site plan and building plan for adjustments to the electrical meters and transformer and modify conditions number two, seventeen, nineteen, twenty-one A, twenty-one B and twenty-five, and accept modified management plan. Parcel on map fourteen A dash two fifty-two and two eighty-one in the BG and T C D R and M P D zoning district. All right, any board member disclosures about this project? And I see one hand. Lawrence?
Thanks Doug. As an employee of Amherst College, I've been advised to recuse myself from this discussion, so I'm gonna turn my camera off and mute myself.
Thank you. Any other board member disclosures? Okay. It looks like we have Tom Reedy and Barry Roberts here with us tonight. Welcome both of you and go ahead with your presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, Tom Reedy, Turner, McBacon, Wilson, here in Amherst, here on behalf of South Pleasant Street LLC. It's application for modification of the site plan or approval, which was granted back in April, I think April tenth of this year. And with me this evening is landowner Barry Roberts. And so, you know, hopefully this is quick and simple. We've got really three different aspects of that site plan approval that we're asking for modification on. The first one is exterior changes. The next one is just acceptance of the management plan as revised, and frankly, is further revised later this, late this afternoon. And then the last one is modification to several of those conditions that the chairman read of the decision itself. And so I'll go through in that order. I don't know that I need to give everybody context of where the site is. I will say it, I won't show it on the map. If you'd like to see it on the map, by all means, please stop and, and let me know. This is the old Hastings Building.
Tom, we don't see your screen yet.
Yeah, no, I wasn't going to show it. If somebody wants to see it, I just, you know, most folks here know the site that we're talking about, so I was just gonna
Yes.
verbally reference it.
Very well.
Save everybody some time. Okay. So let's talk about the exterior revisions. I think what I'll start with is the transformer relocation, bicycle rack relocation and the vestibule elimination. And so that's what you should see on your screen right now. So this is what is proposed. I do have the, the original. If anybody wants to see it, it was provided as part of your packet. I think, you know, most notably, we'll look down, if you can see my mouse in this bottom left corner. The transformer was tucked over a bit more and the bicycle racks kind of were flip-flopped with the transformer. Barry met on site with the folks from EverSource, and they requested that the transformer be relocated as shown here. We've relocated the bicycle racks to the other side, taking up the space that the transformer was in. And previously, there was a vestibule, which was a bump out here. But, and Barry can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think each of the, because this, there's a door on the side here, as you can see in this top corner. It needs access, I believe, to the exterior and not to a vestibule. So that vestibule was a little bump out was eliminated. One of the other things that was changed, there was a Hastings with a date under it previously, and now it's just proposed to say Hastings Building up at the top. I've got a landscape plan down here. We've kept the same style. You know, I prefer to look at this one. We've kept all the same plantings here, and instead of surrounding the transformer with these larger plants, which EverSource frowned upon, we have some lower plants that are proposed for that easterly side of the transformer. So that's, I'd say, like, the first group of exterior changes. I'm happy to sit on this one, or I can go to the electrical meters if you want.
Well, I see one hand of questions, so why don't we talk about these for a few minutes? Jesse?
Thanks. Yeah, just quick question, Tom. So, so the bigger plantings that were removed, is there a reason the big ones can't stay on the street side and have lower ones on the, I guess it's west side? Just to block visibility a little from the street?
Yeah, and Barry, maybe you can answer this one because you met on site. I don't know if there's something special about access on this side of the transformer as compared with this side of the transformer?
Yeah, yes, that's where EverSource is gonna have the doors that access the transformer, so they need it clear.
And that's a fixed, I mean, there's a, there's a reason the doors are on that side, not another side?
Yeah, I believe so. That's what they requested.
Hey Tom, just quickly, how, the one, the, so the lower plants, the, what, what are they? And like, what's the height they would get to?
Yeah, those look like Pennsylvania sedge, and I've got to be honest, I don't know, let's see, oh there here. Six to twelve inches tall, so about a foot tall. And the ones on the other side are inkberry hollies, and those will get two to three feet tall.
So it's basically a grass?
Correct.
Well, I guess, I mean, I kind of shared Jesse's comment, but I do see that the entire transformer area is somewhat shielded by the planting that's farther out toward the street.
Yeah, I mean, if there's a reason the doors need to be on that side, fine. If they could be on the south or west side, that would make more sense to me, and get more coverage of the transformer, but yeah, not, not a huge deal.
Thank you. Okay. Johanna? You're muted.
My comment is along the same line of questioning, which is I don't know, like, I'm, I'm sitting here being like, how is it possible that these transformers, of which there must be, you know, thousands if not millions around the country, only allow the door to be on one side? And my question is how was there any kind of pushback on EverSource's request of like, actually, we, you know, this is like in the heart of downtown, and we'd really love to screen this equipment if possible. So, you know, is there another option, or is this the only option?
All right, Johanna, actually, Tom, I don't, do you want to answer that? I see Fred's got his hand up, and I know he's got some electrical background.
We'll go with Fred first.
Okay, Fred?
Well, I, I don't want to speak for EverSource, but they're gonna be coming in from the, the street line. So they're, the, the feeders to that, the medium voltage feeders to that transformer are gonna run east to west from the street and I suspect EverSource wants to be able to set up their pulling equipment and, and have the access without dealing with potential vehicular traffic. So I suspect that's why that would be their preference, but I, I don't want to speak for them.
Okay, thanks Fred. Tom, what were you gonna say?
Yeah, some, something similar about the orientation of the transformer. You know, if you look at it Yeah, some, something similar about the orientation of the transformer, you know, if you look at it, at the other plan, it was tucked away further on this side, and I think just like Fred said. You know, it's, I think it's somewhat rectangular, this may show it as a bit more of a square, but I think it's a little bit more rectangular than this. And so my suspicion is you either have doors on this side or this side, or you would have to totally flip it, and then I think we're dealing with. Probably. Access issue, so I think, just to butcher what Fred said, I think that's why it's on the most open side.
Okay. All right. Let's see, I don't see any more hands at the moment. And, Tom, regarding the vestibule that was eliminated. I presume there's now a vestibule inside the building, since there usually has to be a vestibule at a main entrance for that?
Yeah, I don't think that's changed on the interior of the building, and maybe what I can do is let me stop my share and bring up the original approved plan.
And I can't remember whether the. The, the former vestibule only went one story, or did it have a more prominent massing on the building?
No, it was, it was only one story, and I will share my screen again, so you can. So if you're following my mouse, it's, it's just this small area right here.
That's not making sense to me, I'm seeing your mouse on the walkway.
We're still seeing the, the previous.
Oh, are ya, look at that, oh, well, maybe I'll show you, so this is where in the next image, you'll see something lacking, so if you.
Okay.
Follow that, and then let me stop being a bozo and. Put this up. Okay, so if you can see the original approval.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so in this area right here. This is where that vestibule existed.
Yeah, can you scroll up to the rendering? The other way.
This way here, okay, yes. This power continues to exist, so maybe this is the best image for you here, Doug?
Yeah, so that, that's the vestibule that went away.
Correct, that you can see right here behind that, behind those plantings. So this remains, this hovering remains. And it's this little vestibule that we no longer have, but, but what you see here vertically with the red, that continues to exist.
Okay. Jesse?
Thanks, sorry, and I've gotta ask again, looking at the original, go backward a little bit. Is there a reason then, the bike racks had to flip, rather than just making the plantings on the east side lower to allow the access? Because if it stayed where it was, then the bikes would also help screen a little bit.
It actually, it shifted.
Favor, but this is something that's really needed. What I'm trying to add.
Yeah, so it, it shifted away from the building, and I'll, I'll call on Barry in a second, because he met with Ryan from EverSource on site, and this is where they. Not this one, but the, the one that you actually are seeing, that is where they asked for the, the sighting of the transformer. And so it wasn't just as simple as reducing the plantings to allow access. I'll go back, you know, so if you kind of screenshot that visual in your head, and I'm sorry, I don't have a, a side by side. You know, understanding that in the next, right, in the next image, this won't be there. This line is going to be kind of your, your demarcation point, if you will. So I'll stop this share, and I'll go to the previous share. So again, here's that same demarcation line that we, I showed you, this is where that vestibule was.
Right, yeah, I see it moving over, again, I'm just trying to figure out, is this like, just making it easier for them, or is this something they really need to happen?
I don't know how often you've dealt with EverSource, but it.
Oh, I have, I have, so I appreciate that.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
But you understand, and again, I'll leave it alone after this, I appreciate your effort to screen it.
No, and I, and I get what, and trust me, if we, you know, from an aesthetics point of view, if, if we could have screened it. Better, we, we would have, right, like, the, the original plan is what we would have loved to have, this is just as a function of listening to the utility company and. They are really the ones who are directing, frankly, even to get enough. Energy for this site was kind of a Herculean task, we can get into that, but I, I won't bore you with it.
Okay, thanks Jesse, Karen?
Is there a way that you could put up one of those little screened, nice fences and have climbing flowers, or? I mean, there might be other things that one can do, I'm not gonna push it, but. Just screen a box like that, there must be some. Things that you could do that EverSource would agree with, because they're not gonna take up that much space.
We can certainly inquire, I think if you were to look around town, you know, even to, to my. Thoughts right now, I don't know of others that have real screening, if anything, the transformers themselves are, I'll, we'll make a verb out of this, muralized, if you will. And so I, I would suspect that if there was the opportunity to screen these transformers, they'd all, I would expect that the town would have asked this before, or they'd all be screened. And that's just not the case, so I, I think that's what we're dealing with here.
Well, there, there's no doubt that if anything was put in front of the east side, it would need to be removable. So that the doors could be opened and the access could happen to the transformer. So, something that's growing on a fence would have to get ripped out. Okay, anything else, Karen?
No, sorry.
Okay, Bruce?
I don't share everybody's concern so much about this, partly from what Tom says, that we've become accustomed to these things being around. One of the solution is to paint murals on them, which seems to be allowed, and I would say that's probably the solution if we, if we really are troubled by this. But I just wanted to remind us all that, and this is evident from the view given in the top right-hand corner here. This transformer is pushed fairly way down from the street in, in a, in a, kind of somewhat down or at the end of a canyon, so I, I think it is largely screened. It's not screened so much from somebody who's taking the accessibility route or walking down this alleyway. But for the bulk of the, the world of Amherst, it's seems to me to be satisfactorily screened, although it would be virtually hidden if it had have been done. The way it was originally suggested, so I don't think we've lost very much, because it's, it, because it's located. Down this little alleyway quite a ways, that's a view, I don't know whether it's a compelling one, but it, it's enough for me to be less concerned about this.
All right, thanks Bruce. Tom, why did you decide not to put the date on the Hastings Building sign?
It was, I think, something that. Mary Brol decided, I mean, so I think it's an homage to her late husband's family, and I think they were most comfortable with it appearing as it's shown here. And so out of respect, I, and I don't wanna speak for Barry, but my presumption is that out of respect, Barry acquiesced to the request.
Okay. All right. Not seeing any hands at the moment, why don't you go to the second group of. Your requests this evening?
Do we wanna, do you wanna see the electric meters, maybe I'll get some momentum for the next group? So, yeah, I'll show you what was originally approved, because I think based on everybody's comments, what we're doing is probably going in the right direction here. Okay, originally approved. So if you're able to see my screen, this is looking from the north, so we're looking southerly, so imagine yourself at Amherst Coffee. Having a nice iced coffee, maybe, looking down that alley, this is what you would have seen in the previous iteration, there were twenty-two, potentially even twenty-three meters. On this northerly facade that you'll see in these two areas here. So, as a result of Amherst College's tenancy for a term of years. We are eliminating that meter bank, and we were proposing two meters, and then EverSource said, good, but we don't want them there, we'll show you where we want them. And so, where they want them is on the westerly side of the building, so think, I mean, this is, this is really tucked back. That you're probably only gonna see if you were to come down those back steps. Where Amherst Cinema is on your left and you walk down those steps, you know, I'm sorry that it's not colorized, but frankly, I don't think that Barry wanted to pay to have it colorized, because it's such a minor change. You've got the two electric meters, and, and so for context, you're on the westerly side of the building, the, the drive aisle is right where my mouse is here. This is a double door that's always been proposed, if you could virtually walk around this building, the electric meter bank would be not on the wall that I'm showing, but. On the northerly wall. Which is, right in that area, so we've got two meters here.
This is what we would perceive as the back of the building, assuming the front was on Pleasant Street.
Correct.
And it faces that slope. That's at the back of the current parking lot.
That is correct.
Or until recently existing parking lot. Fred?
Yeah, I'm. Gonna take a leap here and say that this is. A function of the, what I take to be the elephant in the room here, and that is the function of the occupancies here is changing to become a. Basically, an offshoot of Amherst College, and when that happens, they're all gonna be collectively metered as one. Because the, the college is gonna be paying the utility and not individual tenancies. Am, am I surmising that correctly?
I think, I'll put a little bit of finer point on that, Fred, if I could. It is a function of that, however, there would have been nothing preventing Barry from doing the same thing previously. And so I say that to say, or in the future, because all it would mean then is he, individual tenants do not get individual meter bills. Barry would have to, I'll call it gross rent, these units, and then Barry would be responsible to pay for the utility costs for any electric used by any of the tenants in the future. It just now so happens to be that the occupant of the residential portion of this mixed-use building is Amherst College, and under the lease, they're going to be responsible for this, but. You know, part of this to step back is to ensure that in the future, when Amherst College's lease is up, Barry's gonna be able to actually rent. This, this building, because it's still, you know, as, as the chairman noted in the beginning, it's. Under the mixed-use category, because it is a mixed-use building with the non-residential piece and then the residential piece, so while I, you know, similar to what you did for the A and R, I think your. Assumption is correct, I do wanna make that point of it's not exclusive, because it's Amherst College, but it has come up because it's Amherst College.
Okay. And so, whenever Amherst College leaves, and Barry goes back to marketing each unit individually. It's possible he'll come back and ask to put twenty-three meters on the west side of the building?
Well, I, if I could.
Or the north side?
Anything, well, anything's possible, but Barry, I mean, I think the way the wires are going to be run for this, it would make it, I would suggest cost prohibitive to actually come back to request the separate metering of those units in the future.
Okay. Okay, not seeing any ha, any hands from any of the board. Let's go to the third category of conversation tonight.
So we can take these separately or together, and it's, it's really twofold, the acceptance of the revised management plan and additional information under the management plan, as most recently updated this afternoon. And the modification of certain conditions for the site plan approval, and so.
So would you mind bringing up the management plan? And showing us what has changed from the original approved management plan?
I can do.
And explaining why they need to change. I mean, I can probably get Pam to bring it up, if you have, are having trouble finding.
No, I've, I've got it, I just, I wanna make sure that it's the most updated one, okay. So I'll bring up the first one, and if, excuse me, I'll just look at my notes, so I can call it exactly what the differences are. Okay. So you should be seeing that revised management plan. The first change, and there's, there's three changes on this management plan. The first change you're gonna see down here. And it's really for, I'd call it transparency and, and reputation, is probably the, the, the best way to characterize all of these, why we're here before you, right, because the last time we were here. Barry said, this is what the project is. And subsequently, that's changed, and both Barry and Amherst College both have, I think, stellar reputations in the community, and they wanted to make sure that there wasn't ever any sense. That they were trying to not be transparent or not do something above board, and so that's, that's really the purpose of all this, Doug, is that. You know, we just wanna, not, not a ton has changed, because at the end of the day, Barry's still gonna be, you know, who the town's gonna call, and who's ultimately responsible for all of these items. It's just that, for some of them, like here, residents may utilize various nearby Amherst College surface lots, so. That's part of this management plan, while Amherst College would be a tenant, which is different than previous, so that's one of them. First one's the same, third one's the same. Signage is the same, and then the next two are a bit, a bit different, just because, you know, we've again said, Amherst College is the first line of attack as far as, it, it really is their responsibility, however. The primary point of contact and who's primarily responsible in case of issues will be the landowner, and that's for both landscaping and snow removal. So those really three points are the changes to the management plan.
So if. Or let's say when Amherst College stops being the primary tenant, you are prepared to return and give us a new management plan?
That is correct.
Okay. Although I respect your, your effort to maintain your reputation. Why bother to do this?
I think it's, I think it's just that, right, so.
As a. You could have just come back and asked for a, you know, a sort of point of, just a piece of information to give us, rather than submitting new management plans and. Changing the conditions.
I think when we get to the conditions, there's probably gonna be. A bit more of an appropriate modification. I can appreciate your point for the management plan and the additional information for the management plan. But I think it just comes back to be that simple, just to make sure that nobody, you know, everybody's sensitive to reputation and that six months in the future, there's not a, well, geez. You know, you pulled a fast one on us, and, you know, it's as simple as that.
Okay, first, well, actually, Jesse just dropped off, so Fred, did you have something to say before we go?
Yeah, I think there are, as I recall, the original management plan, there's a whole lot, I remember going through it in detail and finding a bunch of issues with it. That all of which were in, being corrected as a result of. That all of which were in the, being corrected as a result of uh, the information at the prior hearing. Uh, there's a whole bunch of stuff in there that, that apply to conventional landlord-tenant relationships and which do not apply here. And so I think it's entirely appropriate that uh, uh, this revised management plan be, be submitted.
Okay. Thank you, Fred. And um, Tom, just so that I'm, and maybe everybody else is clear. Um, the plan now is for Amherst College to lease all of the residential units in addition to the Amherst College store area. Does that comprise the entire building?
It does, yes. So they have the non-resi- they have a, a lease for the non-residential portion, which is the bookstore, which meets the non-residential percentage requirement under the bylaw. And then they also have a lease for the residential portion, um, which makes up the balance of the building.
Okay, and the uh, the intention of Amherst College is to have probably a mix of staff, faculty and students occupy the building or uh, how, or would it be exclusively students or how, what is known about that intention?
Yeah, and, and I think it's a good question and it's primarily students at this point, right? Uh, primarily students, uh, and I think at least one residential life professional residing uh, onsite.
Okay, so it wouldn't be used for, I don't know, junior faculty who can't find affordable housing in the area and don't wanna drive from coal rain or something?
I would say, uh, I don't think that's the intention, but, but I'll also say there, you know, and we've had plenty of discussions with the, the building department, planning department about this. It, it could be that, right? There would be no prohibition on it being that. Because these are all, you know, all twenty-two units are independent living facilities. They're, they're dwelling units, right? They have their own kitchen, they have their own bathroom, their own, um, you know, cooking facilities, bedrooms. And so if Amherst College in the future said, "We don't want this to be what I've just articulated," they, and it's still under their lease, they could change it to be that junior faculty if they wanted to. Um, and so that's, you know, I don't see a prohibition in, in, in the law that would require them to keep it to one type of occupant under, uh, their lease.
Okay. All right, why don't you go on to the cu- conditions?
And I guess one question would be, do you want to see the um, additional information on the management plan or are you satisfied with?
If, yes, yes, please, why don't you, why don't you go there next?
Okay. Um, again, I'll just
Can, can you blow that up a little bit?
I certainly can. Now, let me do this. Is that better?
That's better, yeah.
Okay. Um, so I'll just highlight the changes. The first change is down here at the onsite manager. Um, originally the answer was no. And now it's changed to Amherst College will have residential life staff in the building consistent, consistent with its staffing for campus housing. So that's one of the changes. Uh, the next change is just to call out that the landowner, as far as noise management of tenants parties, et cetera, the landowner will remain the primary point of contact and primarily responsible in case of any issues. The next change is down here, uh, in the parking management. Because there, um, in the, in the previous version, obviously Amherst College was not involved. So there was no ability to park on the Amherst College surface parking lots. And so that has been an addition. And then in this last one, it's just, um, instead of saying management, we've had resident move-ins and move-outs coordinated by Amherst College. But, but really the, the balance of the information is the same. It's just calling out Amherst College as that uh, uh, actor there. And then again, the landowner will remain the primary point of contact and primarily responsible in case of any issues.
Okay. Any comments from the board on that document? Nate?
Yeah, I was gonna say that, you know, because in totality, the, these, every, you know, we call them like three different issues that Tom, the dressing, uh, mainly the changing conditions required a, a public hearing. So, the original decision had a number of conditions that said if the management plan changed, it would just be reviewed at a public meeting. And so really, most of these changes could have been dealt with at a public meeting if the other things didn't happen, right? And so typically, we don't get into sometimes who the tenant is, right? Our conditions allow any residential or non-residential use in a mixed-use building. And we don't necessarily call out who the management company is in such detail. Uh, you know, sometimes it's the owner or we'll say the management company, but we don't, you know, we don't get so specific. Uh, and so, you know, typically this would just be reviewed at a public meeting. Uh, similarly, I was gonna say that the um, the changes to the site plan are pretty minimal. And so if this, if those were the only things occurring, you know, it might be a decision by the building commissioner that they're de minimis and could be handled administratively. Um, Eversource does require a certain separation from the buildings. They are getting uh, pretty particular about screening. And so if, you know, as you were talking, I did my Google street view around town and there's a number of transformers that have nothing around them. You know, they don't, maybe it's just a few bollards. And so, you know, the location here is tucked away and there's still some vegetation around it. So you know, the vestibule is by code. So, you know, perhaps those changes could have been administratively uh, handled. And so really, it's the change in conditions that, you know, it's, and, and the management plan, but really the conditions that are um, requiring a modification of the previous site plan. So there's, I don't know, maybe five to seven changes in the conditions uh, that Tom will present that, you know, ness- you know, really require a public hearing.
Okay, thanks for that context, Nate. Tom?
Sure, without further ado. Okay, so if you can see my screen, you'll see those conditions with the uh, proposed changes. So first one, condition two. All we're asking for is to, if you do in fact, uh, accept the new management plan, just to place that new, uh, the date of approval of the, of the management plan. So the management plan and additional information as presented on October sixteen, twenty twenty-four, so that there is that benchmark. So that's the first piece. The next one, um, is a change to eliminate apartments and make it dwelling units. And as an aside, this is probably good in conditions going forward because that's technically what the mixed-use bylaw requires or, or dwelling units. And that's why I made that point earlier uh, to the chair about that these are all independent dwelling units. And so the change would be to eliminate apartments, to add dwelling units and any permitted non-residential use occupying at least thirty percent of the first floor, including without limitation occupancy by a nonprofit educational institution for nonprofit educational uses, provided the mixed-use requirement of dwelling units in combination with non-residential space is maintained. And so again, it, it may seem, and some of these may all seem like overkill, but it's, it's part of uh, the process of again, making sure that, and then there's no sleight of hand here, right? Because I'll, I'll back up and, and just somewhat speak generally. Um, there, there is a nonprofit educational use, use category. We are not looking to avail ourself of that use category. We are looking to maintain this as a mixed-use building. And particularly, we're looking to maintain it as a mixed-use building because uh, in the future, when Amherst College no longer is leasing the property, Barry is going to operate it as a mixed-use building. And so it's important on the advice of council to keep it as a mixed-use building. So that's kinda where we're starting. Also, um, I think it's important that, you know, we, we name that it's gonna be a nonprofit educational use within the context of that mixed-use building, just to make sure that there's kind of the avoidance of doubt. So again, even though it seems a little belabored and I know it's not typical, um, it's something that, you know, we as the applicant are asking for. And it's not something necessarily that I would expect the planning board in the future to be imposing as conditions of, let's say, you know, University Drive at Amity, the four twenty-two. I don't expect this type of specificity in condition to be placed on something like that. Uh, but as, as you know, Mr. Chair and probably Nate has, has seen as well, when you're dealing with conditions like this, if the applicant is asking for a condition like this, um, you know, that's okay. If the, the board were to look to impose a condition without the applicant saying this is okay, you know, there could be an issue, but it's, it wa- it's different given the fact that we are affirmatively requesting these changes. So that's on seventeen. Um, nineteen, uh, you know, we have asked to not be part of the residential rental property bylaw. Um, if you wanna push back on that now, before we go any further, I'm, I'm happy to a- address it. Or we can go through the rest of them and then you can, and push back. So this one really just says because of the occupant, we don't, uh, we would prefer not to go to the rental regis- through the rental registration bylaw.
Nate, is that something we can waive? Do we have the authority to do that?
Well, we could not accept the changes. So the building commissioner, you know, in the rental registration bylaw would say that if it's owned and operated and in an educational district, it's exempt. But, you know, being a mixed-use building, where it is, it would be subject to rental registration. And so, you know, he would not necessarily recommend this condition. This, the changes. And that, that's a discussion. We, you know, I, I, you know, I spoke with Tom and I mean, we're doing this for all the projects. So Wayfinders is doing an affordable housing project. And we're having them be subject to it. All Amherst Housing Authority, uh, properties are, you know, so uh, right now, nothing's been exempted unless it's already mentioned in the bylaw, right? So there are exemptions in the bylaw. It doesn't apply to you know, things in the educational district or things that are serving a nonprofit educational use, you know, on a campus or for other purposes. So um, if it's in the ED zone. So I don't, you know, it's not an onerous task. It's an online application. Once applica- you know, once information's entered, it's auto-renewed every year. Um, there's an inspection, it won't happen. For the first five years on new construction, it'll happen once within the first ten years. And then after that, it could be maybe once every ten years, uh, depending on how that works out. So, um, you know, we're seeing it as an information gathering tool. So the rental registration, you know, the, it was, you know, there's a new bylaw passed. Uh, that took a long time for town council and staff to work on it. And we see it as a really great information gathering tool. Uh, and then also, you know, it allows for some inspections and it provides the ability, if there's issues, to have a little bit more enforcement action. And so, um, you know, like I said, this isn't necessarily an exempted uh, use or location for this.
All right, so Tom, how strongly do you feel about this? I mean, Nate didn't really, didn't really answer my question whether we had the authority to waive it. It sounds like building commissioner would prefer we not. Um, I don't know what town council would say. Um, you can, if you wanna think about it for a second. Jesse, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I was just gonna come back to that. Cause what I heard Nate say first was the building commissioner would not accept this modification. So I was wondering the same thing. Really your question, Doug, can we as a board waive this or not?
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess Doug, when you say waive it, do you mean as in we accept the changes or we do not accept the changes?
Well, if, if sorry.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, thi- this change uh, exempts the applicant from participation in the, in the uh, rental registration program. And I'm not sure we have the authority to do that.
So that was gonna be my point is that ultimately, if the rental registration requires rental registration, I don't know how, I would, I guess I'd say the inclusion or maybe exclusion of this wo- would matter. From, from our perspective, if you say from the planning board's perspective, we're not gonna make it a condition and you could eliminate this condition altogether. And then we're just subject to whatever that rental registration is. And if we are subject to it, we're subject to it. If we're not, then we're not. But it, you know, I, I, could I imagine a scenario where there's a condition of this approval which says you have to register, but the rental registration bylaw itself says we don't. And then we're, we're at a conflict and, and then you're saying, yes, you do have to register. So that's kinda where we're coming from here is that if you say it is a condition, does that take precedent over if the rental registration says we don't have to?
Okay, all right. All right, um. So how did the original condition read? I guess if I look at your underline here and try to ignore all of that, it said, "The units at the project shall be registered and permitted in a so, in accordance with the writ rental registration bylaw. Loss or sus- suspension of a rental permit shall constitute a violation of this condition." That's all it said.
Correct. So it was shall be registered and that's where I think some of the, that's what kinda piqued my interest in this condition. And if you say shall be regist- or if required, shall be registered and permitted? I mean, that's a different story. So then at least if there's a fundamental somewhat change in the law, then we don't, we're not in violation of this condition as well, I think
Right.
that's okay.
All right, let's think about that. Bruce?
I mean, I, I'm interested in Tom's characterization as he reflected on it uh, on your urging Doug to say perhaps the, we could strike this. It seems to me that this falls into some of these categories that I often get a little jonesed by where we put in conditions that, that essentially say you shall comply with. Well, for example, with the uh, the um, project that we did last time, uh, it was the uh, uh, on Woodside. Anyway, we got into a discussion about conditioning the uh, uh, whether something was accessible or not. Um, and uh, when I think we ultimately decided we would let the regulatory, the appropriate regulatory authority, uh, which was the building commissioner and, and the uh, and the AAB um, uh, statutes, take care of this and we didn't have to get involved. I don't think the planning board necessarily, or has to get involved in putting into its conditions compliance with regulations that are, um, otherwise, you know, that are outside the bylaw. Um, so I imagine that this was uh, considered by the, the staff a harmless enough condition that we'll just, you know, do as we often do, say you shall do this and you shall do that, which probably would happen anyway. Um, uh, but in the sen- in, in the, in the instance where the applicant thinks that they may be or would want to make application to directly to the jurisdiction of the ren- ren- residential rental bylaw. Um, and let that entity, I suppose the building commissioner, make a decision. I'm kinda persuaded that we shouldn't get in the way of it, that we should let it sort itself out without our intervention. Cause I personally don't feel strongly committed to supporting the residential bylaw beyond its uh, uh, beyond, beyond its ordinary promulgation. So that's the way I'm feeling about this, that it seems like we should, uh, consider just deleting it altogether.
Okay, thanks, Bruce. Um, I was kind of taken with Tom's mentioning that something, a dependent clause like if required by the bylaw, the project shall register. Um, but uh, there's a bunch of hands up. Um, Nate, I'm gonna let you go next.
Sure, I mean, I think the original condition said, you know, shall be registered and permitted in accordance with the bylaw, right? So if to me, the, the in accordance with the bylaw is that conditional phrase. So if the bylaw exempts this or it doesn't need to because it doesn't, you know, the bylaw, you know, says otherwise, then it's in accordance with the bylaw. It doesn't mean it has to register if the bylaw says it's exempt. It means it has to, you know, follow the bylaw if it's required to. And so Has to register if the bylaw says it's exempt. It means it has to, you know, follow the bylaw if it's required to. And so. I, I think the way it was written allows that, you know, from the building commissioner. It's not necessarily, I mean, we could. Reword it so it's maybe a little clearer, but I think, you know. You know, shall be registered in accordance with the bylaw. I mean, we have a number of conditions like that. And so. You know, if it's, if the bylaw has some reason why it doesn't need to be registered, it doesn't need to be, um. You know, it's, it's worded a little strongly, but you know, it, it allows for that.
Alright, thanks. Tom, can you? Could you interpret it that way?
I think you could interpret it that way. Um. I would just suggest if we do, the, the clearer we make it, the better. Um. But I don't. And I guess one of the questions maybe for Nate, given the implementation of the. You know, just going down the rabbit hole a little bit, given the implementation of the residential rental by law, if. There is some like if. So oftentimes, by way of a little bit of diversion, I come in front of boards and I say, you know, I'm asking for a variance and they say, you can't do that because it's not allowed. And I say, no, 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 it's precisely allowed under the bylaw because you allow variances. And so. Sometimes people say, well, but it's not allowed. So here, I would just worry that if the residential rental by law did allow. Some discretion of the building commissioner in the implementation of the program. Where we could ask for such a variance or waiver. Is, as long as that process is seen as in accordance with, I've got no problem with it. And that's why I just say, does it make sense to make it a little bit more clear? And I'm not gonna die on this hill because I think it's. Probably okay, but I'm just, that the variance example is one that comes to mind.
Sure, yeah. The, the bylaw allows for, I, I think it's actually maybe in the rules and regs that cited in the bylaw that there is a waiver provision. Anytime there's a renewal or possible inspection or fee. So, you know, in year seventeen or. Year twelve, if this has been inspected once and it's had good standing and you say, well, you know, we have other reasons to. You know, it, it's inspected annually through Amherst College or the property manager and you have those reports, then you could ask for a waiver from any piece of the bylaw. Um. But, uh, you know, again. That's the way, you know, the building commissioner would like to see that, you know, operate. You know, I, you know, if you wanted to have another clause, uh, you know, to. To clarify that original condition without the, you know, what's. Out, you know, underlined here, I think that would be, would be fine as well. Sometimes you write these, you know, strongly in the affirmative. And so if we had a qualifying phrase or something, that, that would be fine as well.
Okay, so, uh, Nate, it sounds like you'd be alright with striking the underlined. Sections or at least the initial few lines. And, and having a conditional. Uh, added to the, the sort of original language.
Right. It's kind of like what we do with inclusionary units. We say, you know, to the extent. Like allowed by law, you know, we'll follow local preference, right? So it's not like we're gonna get, we can't. We can't require a local preference of affordable units beyond what. The state regulates, right? So it's like, we can't require this to register with rental permitting if it doesn't need to. And so. You know, if we want to have some, you know, introductory.
Yeah, as, as required by the. Or if required by the Amherst, by a residential property by law. Rent rental registration by law. Uh, in the town of Amherst, the property shall be registered. Something like that.
Yep. That's fine.
Alright, so Pam, did you? Take adequate notes for our, perhaps getting this revised?
I did.
Okay. Okay, um, thank you. So we think we'll probably want to revise number nineteen. Uh. Uh, Jesse, yeah, Jesse and Fred, I do see your hands. So Jesse, why don't you go ahead?
Sure. Just quickly, I, I was gonna say the same thing. I agree. The original language leaves it up to the building commissioner essentially. And I don't, I don't think we have the authority. To waive that as a planning board.
Yeah.
I would be in favor of returning to the original language with a provisional con- with that clarified if needed, but even without, I think that's what would happen.
Okay.
That's mine.
Great. And Fred?
Yeah, I, uh. I have a real problem with, uh, these revisions because, uh. I think it, uh, positions this site plan review in opposition. To the, uh, Amherst rental registration by law. Uh, implicitly in pro- in, uh, opposition to it. I, I. There's a lot of things I don't go along with, with the building inspector, but this one. I think I have to agree with the building inspector on this. Uh, I don't think this should change. I think, uh, if they're gonna occupy this as a, as apartments. Then they're gonna register them as apartments. Uh. Uh, I, I, I don't see any grounds to try and craft. An exemption where an exemption doesn't exist. Except through a process that is available. Under the rental registration by law, but I think that's if, if they want relief, that's where they gotta go for relief. I don't think we have any business attempting to grant it for them.
Yeah.
Feel very strongly about that.
Well, I think where we're ending up, we're not granting the relief. Uh, we're simply saying they need to follow the bylaw. As. I guess promulgated and, uh. Uh, practiced by the building commissioner. Okay, um, Tom, why don't we move on to twenty-one A?
Sure. And so we added an A because we added a B and instead of renumbering the entirety of the. Sequential conditions, that's one of the things we did. So you'll see twenty-one B as a new condition. Twenty-one A is a revision to an existing condition that a existing condition, maybe this will be easier. Says any substantial modifications to the lease agreement which may impact tenant oversight as determined by the building commissioner. Specifically excluding minor updates such as pricing date modifications, clerical errors or language. Updates required by the Commonwealth or Massachusetts or other government entity shall require application to return to the planning board at a public meeting. So. Because of the nature of the tenancy here. Um, we wanted to have a carve off because this condition contemplates. Uh, lease agreements with tenants. And that is not what's going to be happening here. And so that's why we say while a nonprofit educational institution occupies the dwelling units. No lease agreements for the occupants of those dwelling units. Uh. Maybe I should say are required for those dwelling units. However, if any of the dwelling units are not occupied by a nonprofit educational institution. Then it reverts back to kind of that original language. And then for those not occupied by a nonprofit, which may impact tenant oversight, et cetera, et cetera. So then. That one, if I could just go to the next one, taken in conjunction with. If the tenant is a nonprofit educational institution occupying the dwelling units, a notice of lease between the landowner and the tenant. Shall be provided to inspection services. So, so that gives the inspection services. Evidence that there is a lease between the landowner and the nonprofit educational institution. And then, um. We would not have to provide any of those updated lease agreements because there wouldn't be those lease agreements. However. When the lease with the Amherst, the nonprofit educational institution terminates. Or is reduced or modified so that there are units, either some or all, which are not leased to that nonprofit educational institution. We do have to provide, uh, that. Lease and the notices to the, um, building commissioner for review. So again, just trying to encapsulate what's happening here and the realities of it while allowing Barry in the future. To, to kind of have a seamless, um, approach.
Um. Nate, um, is it the rental registration by law that. Requires submission of the lease for each apartment?
I, I, I'm not sure that it requires that necessarily. Um.
So this is something that is actually instituted by the planning board?
Yeah, I think when this originally came about, there was some. Worry, um, about, you know, how this would be rented. And so we put in this condition, original condition. That read, you know, basically as Tom said, you know, it said any substantial modifications to the lease agreement which may impact tenant oversight. As determined by the building commissioner. Specifically excluding minor updates such as pricing, date modifications, clerical errors. Or language updates required by the Commonwealth or other governmental entity shall require the applicant to return to the planning board at a public meeting. And so. I think it was some roundabout way to try to get, you know, if a lease agreement changes, the planning board should hear it. Um. You know, to me, sometimes we don't actually get into. Sometimes the planning board does, sometimes it doesn't. The ZBA does sometimes. You know, we want to see lease agreements to make sure, say that they're not, you know, if we want a twelve year, a twelve month lease or a full year lease, but. Uh, I mean, to me, that I'm not sure what that condition was saying. It was really at the discretion or determination of the building commissioner. If there was a substantial change to some lease agreement. And so. I mean, typically we don't zone for, you know, we don't have zoning that gets to the end user and, you know, the tenancy piece. And so.
Right.
You know, I, I, you know. I mean, honestly, like these, the changes are fine. I think the original condition was kind of odd, um, to begin with. Uh, so you know, if this is the applicant's requesting this for clarification, I, you know, I see no problem with it.
Okay, well, I, I mainly just wanted to know if this was something that. Was a part of the rental registration. Submission, which again, we wouldn't be able to waive. So, but you're saying no, so, okay, great. Um, Bruce?
Uh, Tom, might I correctly understand or, uh, interpret this to essentially mean that? That the, uh, once having leased the entirety or whatever portion of the entirety of the building. Uh, that Amherst College might decide to lease. That they, they then are able to manage what essentially would be the subleasing. Uh, without, um. Without, without the, uh, end of, without having to deal the, uh, sublet, some lease by some lease with the town. Is this essentially something that the colleges? Or any nonprofit would be looking for to be able to. Essentially manage the subletting of a building once they have leased it. Is that the way, is that a reasonable way to characterize this?
Yeah, and I, I, I put a final point on that. I don't know, uh, that the college actually subleases. As that term may be defined from a legal perspective, any of these units. There's probably.
I was just using it as the only word that I knew that would more or less describe what's happening, but. Whatever, whatever a bit of word is.
And maybe, I'll put it this way, Bruce, is that, that consider that residential portion as, uh. The space that is the leased premises. And. The college has under their lease, the ability to. Use it in accordance with the, these approvals, but to, to use it how they see fit. And so. You know, I, I'll, I'll be careful with the sublet, but the, the concept is correct, right? And, and so that's why it would it make sense for every time. Cause there, there just doesn't exist those documents. Which have like, go to the building commissioner and say, well, here's what you want. And I think to Nate's point, it's somewhat, I, I'll use the word vestigial. But I would say even here, not applicable. If you'd want to strike twenty-one A. Or, or twenty-one and intentionally omit it and not even have a twenty-one B. That'd be fine also. We're just trying to work within the context of the conditions that you gave and being respectful to the, to the planning board for the work that you put in.
Okay. Thank you.
Alright, thanks Bruce. Uh, Tom, let's go to twenty-five.
Okay. Last but certainly not least, um, and this is. Um, simply because the, the condition read the owner shall have an onsite regi- resident manager or twenty-four seven supervision. In order to ensure the safety, health and welfare of tenants. The owner may return to the planning board at a public meeting to request a revised condition with alternative arrangements to achieve this goal. And so here again, we just wanted to acknowledge the situation and say. The onsite resident manager or twenty-four seven supervision. Which if it's occupied for this nonprofit educational institution. Uh, the nonprofit educational institution shall manage the dwelling units consistent with its staffing and management for campus housing. And instead of tenants, we just called it occupants. So, uh, again, I don't want to get too cutesy, but it seemed like for what we're looking to do. It was kind of the, the comprehensive approach to this. While allowing again Barry in the future, if the nonprofit educational institution was not occupying the space. He wouldn't have to come back. It would just be that, uh, he would have to have onsite resident manager or twenty-four seven supervision. Or pursuant to that final sentence, be able to come back and say, hey, here's what I'm doing. Can we have this arrangement? So. Again, um, that's the request.
So it does appear that this revision would. Eliminate the require, would, would no longer require. An onsite resident manager. In, in other words, we would be deferring to. However, Amherst College wanted to supervise the project. And, um, that could include not having a twenty-four seven. Have, not having supervision twenty-four seven. Do I interpret that correctly?
I think it could. Um. Think it could be read that way. We've gotten the additional information for the management plan that. Amherst College will have residential life staff in the building consistent with its staffing for campus housing.
Right. Which, which could easily be less than twenty-four seven.
Correct. And I suppose. One of the other comments I would make to you is that it doesn't, the condition as it's. In its current iteration does not. Say twenty-four seven with no alternatives. It provides an onsite resident manager which. Um, may not have that twenty-four seven requirement there. So I don't see it as going from certain twenty-four seven. Supervision to something less than that. It's, it could be an onsite resident manager. It could be twenty-four seven supervision. Or if it is a nonprofit educational institution, then it's how they.
Uh huh.
Run their business, if you will.
Okay. Uh, Jesse and then Fred?
Thanks. Um, yeah, I was not told until, I was not really in favor of this condition to begin with. Um. But I do agree, that means Amherst College could decide, no, there's no supervision. And just. Is what it is. And then that would be fine. I just want to clarify that is what this could result in. If they changed their management plan for their, all their buildings. That could be what happens. Correct, Tom? So I understand.
Yeah, yes, I think that's, I think that's a fair read. It's not. That was not my intent, but I think it's certainly reading the language the way that it's written. That is, yes, that could happen. And I frankly think we want to give the latitude. To Amherst College and I think, um. Uh, you know, these are conditions, but as a practical matter, if there's going, if there's an issue on the site, there's gonna be. I mean, you've got a slew of, I can't even count them, cause I don't have it off the top of my head, other conditions that somewhat regulate. Management. So I just.
Yeah, I was gonna follow up with, yeah, but, yes, I have no problem with it. Yes.
Yes, but you're correct. Thank you.
Alright, thanks Jesse. Fred?
Uh, yeah, I'm comfortable with twenty-five, the way it's written. Uh. Uh. I mean, basically this is gonna be a small dormitory. And, uh. There doesn't seem to be. Uh. Public policy issues with Amherst College dormitories that I'm aware of. Um. So I, 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 I think I'm comfortable with, with twenty-five, the, the way it's written. I. Just, I could be persuaded otherwise, but right now I think I would support it as written.
Okay, alright, thanks Fred. Alright, so, uh, I believe, I believe that the, there was the one condition on the previous page. Was it seventeen or nineteen? Nineteen, nineteen, where we were gonna be. Basically just adding an, uh, uh, an introductory conditional phrase at the beginning of the original language. Something to the effect of. If required by the Amherst residential rental property by law. Then we'd go on to the rest of the, uh. Condition.
And maybe what I would say is just to kind of touch on my variance argument, maybe as a positive phrase, like if required. Uh, by the Amherst residential rental property by law, comma, comma. Or waive thereunder, comma, and then get into the rest of it. Just to, again.
Just to acknowledge that it's possible that it could be waived by some authority other than the planning board.
Thank you very much.
Alright, um, so with that edit. Um. I have, have, have not heard of other. Edits to this that are objectionable to the board. Have I, have I misremembered? Uh, would somebody correct me soon if I'm wrong? Have I, have I misremembered? Uh, would somebody correct me soon if I'm wrong? Um, and before we leave, uh, before we get to a vote, I am going to ask for public comment. So maybe, uh, I'll, I'll go ahead and do that before we come back for probably a vote. All right, so we still have, uh, twelve attendees, and, uh, at this time, I would like to invite public comment on the totality of the, uh, revisions uh, of the applicant. So I see one hand from Ken Rosenthal. Pam, if you could bring over Ken. Hi, Ken, if you could give us your name and your street address, uh, you will have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Marshall. Ken Rosenthal, fifty-three Sunset Avenue. I've known Barry Roberts for almost fifty years. There's no better developer in Amherst than Barry. He works very well with the neighbors. He does what he says he's going to do, and he builds very well and is good for Amherst. And that's why this morning, when I got a phone call early in the morning from two Amherst College retired professors who are considering selling their house and wanted to know where in Amherst they might live and have a better uh, and, and live closer to the center of town with access to restaurants and other facilities, I recommended, of course, that they see Barry Robertson, consider this project. I gave them Barry's telephone number and email address. And then I found out there was a meeting tonight, and the subject was on the meeting. This is a terrible, terrible idea. This change in Barry's plans means that this is a dormitory for sixty-some students in Amherst, in Town Center. Mr. Hartwell is the only man who's dared to use the word dormitory, but that's what it is. The project uses words like residential life staff and campus housing. Now, I'm an Amherst alum, and I have a high regard for Amherst administration. I knew they want, do a very good job of managing their own facilities. But what we want in Town Center are housing for year-round residents, people who will register their cars in Amherst, people who will then pay the Amherst auto-registration tax to, excise tax to the town of Amherst. People who live here and shop here, who spend their money in town, who don't go home on weekends and summer times, who are here the long run. This is one, one more nail in the coffin of Amherst as a residential community for people who live and work in town. Now, my friends did not know about this change, and neither did I. And of course, now they're going to look elsewhere. They're not going to be able to live here, even if they wanted to. Again, I have a high regard for Barry, but this is a terrible mistake. I hope you will, at the planning board, you have to plan for the better of town, not just deal with question after question, uh, uh, in isolation. This is a terrible change for the middle of town that should not be allowed. Barry's original plans, which would have twenty-two units with sixty-three beds, which would make it possible, yes, for some students to rent directly from Barry, but also make it possible for other people who are year-round residents to do so. That would be a good idea. This is going to be something that is run by Amherst College, for Amherst College students, and nothing other than Amherst College students. And I'm very sorry that this is change, changes being presented to you. Please vote it down. Thank you, Mr. Robertson. Thank you, planning board.
Okay, thank you, Ken. Yeah, I guess I will say somewhat, I guess in response, Ken, um, first of all, this is a site plan review, and it's difficult for us to absolutely reject such proposals. Secondly, I don't really view most of these changes as being necessary for Mr. Roberts to uh, execute this transaction with Amherst College. You know, I think, uh, Tom made clear earlier that he was here on behalf of Amherst College and Barry in order to make perfectly clear to all of us what is going down, uh, rather than have it happen off, out of sight, let's say. Um, so, I guess I, I respect that urge and, um, having brought it up, uh, Tom and Barry, you're going to get a few slings and arrows uh, of this plan. But I, I don't think, you know, this could have happened without any public hearing tonight. There might be, you know, changing apartment to occupancy unit or tenant to resident. Um, you know, I, I'm sure there was a way you could have structured that deal so that you did twenty-three different individual leases for units with Amherst College um, and didn't have to do a single umbrella lease. Um, and that would have been perfectly consistent with the conditions we gave you. So, Ken, I think, I, I totally get where you're coming from. We do need pe- more people living downtown. But I'm not sure what we could have done to prevent this, and, um, you know, that's, that's what I think. Uh, does anybody else want to comment, uh, on what we heard from Ken? Or, you know, I'm not seeing any other hands from the public. Um, and I know, Karen, you had your hand up before we started public comment, so. Um, okay, so, uh, I guess Bruce will go to you and then Karen, and while we're listening to them, members of the public, if anybody else wants to speak, please raise your hand.
I'll be quick. Uh, for the record, I agree with Ken, and Doug, I agree with you. Um, I'm sad to see that, uh, the vision that Ken seems to have actually tried to orchestrate by his references and so forth to Barry uh, didn't happen or may not happen, but I regret that sadly, we don't have the power to be able to do things differently. And Barry's got his investment capital, you know, at risk or what have you, and, uh, so I know that, uh, these things happen, and I agree with you, Doug, and, and it may be in the fullness of time. Things will head more in Ken's direction. Uh, we just don't know, but, uh, I agree. I don't think there's much we can do about it. Except say what I just said and say what you said. And Ken, say what you said.
Okay, thanks, Bruce. Karen?
Yeah, I was going to all along say how, uh, I just found out tonight what was happening, that Amherst College was taking this whole thing over. And as much as we love having Amherst College in town, I think it's, it's, it's very sad that they're taking over one of the prime spots. Both this, both actually the store and the residential things that could be really a vital part for the town of Amherst. Amherst College has beautiful buildings. They're doing a great job. But this is one of the prime locations in the middle of town where I, I actually also said, okay, this is where we can put life into the town. And now we're just having life of, of that very lovely elite university and its people taking over that center. So it, it makes me sad. But all along, I, I thought, well, what can we do about this? There's nothing we can do because they are wonderful tenants. They'll take good care of it. But it's this sterile sort of Amherst College presence that we have right on the common there, which is very much needed. Um, but I'm sure Barry will figure out another place where he's going to do what we need to have done, hopefully.
All right, thanks, Karen. Jesse?
Thanks. Um, slightly different perspective to share, so I agree with Ken, Ken's sentiment completely. Uh, that, what we would love to have in our town. But I don't think this is sad. I don't fault this transaction anyway. I think from inception, we all knew this was going to be all students. Until there's a whole lot more housing available, that's what's going to happen in building after building. That's why we're working on the overlay. That's why we're trying to have other projects to bring in more options. So, yeah, I don't, I don't, I really don't have a problem with this at all, for, for, I think it's a pretty good solution. Might be actually managed better than it would be if it were students from all around.
Okay, Jesse. Bruce? More thoughts?
When I saw this and read through this, I understood what was going on, and I understood from the rear apartments, the format, you know, the, the way in which they've been planned with more or less similar sized bedrooms and so forth, it wasn't entirely surprising. I kind of assumed that the front part of the building, the five apartments in the front, would be for Amherst College staff or what have you, as, as I, someone had mentioned earlier, and I think Tom indicated that that may or may not be the case. Barry, I, I, uh, given the, the mood, which if Ken's, uh, question is indicative of, uh, others in town, and I think I know it is because I've heard, uh, folks uh, speculate on the outcome of this building similarly, uh, uh, weeks and months ago. So I understand why, uh, Ted, uh, uh, Tom, you're, you're coming to be very clear about this. But Barry, is it, is it possible that, uh, the front section, the old part of the building that, uh, I spent years in when I had my office there? So I know it feels lovely in there. It's quite different from what you'll build out the back, I'm sure. I wondered whether some of Ken's aspirations and perhaps the boards as well and others in town couldn't be uh, satisfied or serviced by, uh, getting some permanent residents, uh, in the front part of the building that is more conducive to mixed, uh, 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 so we say, uh, 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 more, um, interesting residential experience and have those people with their uh, overlooks to the common, as I did. It's a very lovely place to live. Uh, it seems to be really nice if some of that building could be dedicated in the way that Ken was, uh, thinking. Um, it's a a plea, I guess.
All right, thanks, Bruce. Tom or Barry, uh, any, any, anything you want to say, or shall we move on?
Oh, I mean, a couple of things. First of all, we appreciate all the comments, Mr. Rosenthal. We, we respect you and obviously everything that you've said. You've had a long relationship with, with Barry. Um, to Bruce, um, there is already a lease, and so that idea of renting that front piece separate just wouldn't come to fruition. That's, that's part of the leased area with, with Amherst College. I'll say, uh, Barry has other projects, uh, thirty-seven North Pleasant Street, which hopefully comes in front of the planning board sooner rather than later for, I think it's eight residential units, which is at the old Murphy's space. I know Kuhn Riddle is working on those plans. I know he's got plans for three thirty-six North Pleasant Street um, to kind of revitalize that end of downtown as well. I think this, uh, was a good opportunity, and I I would just ask that the, the board looks at it from a positive light of Amherst College willing to invest in downtown and bringing students downtown, right? You look at, frankly, before Barry got involved with the bookstore, it was, uh, Hastings, which was well-loved, but out of business and an empty space. And Amherst College came into that space and revitalized that space at, at no insignificant investment either. And so, you know, Ms. Winter, we might have these ideas of what, what we would love to see there, but then there's that practical reality of making sure that the mortgages is, the mortgage is paid, the bid fees are paid, the insurance is paid, the taxes are paid, the taxes, which, you know, one of the things to mention here is there's going to be significant taxes which go to the town that the town can use for other things. There's going to be rental payments, Barry, that Barry can use for other things. And so, you know, I, I know that we can bemoan and, and maybe regret that, that this location specifically is, is going the way that it's going. I would look at it positively that Amherst College wants to make this investment in town, in downtown, to have its students right there, if anything. To me, that's a vote of confidence in what downtown could be. Instead of saying, okay, Amherst College, you just stay in your little enclave and, and, you know, be the good college that we, we want you to be, but don't come into downtown because we want it to be something else. I mean, this is this whole, people that are moving to town, you got UMass on one end, you got Amherst, Hamster College really on the other end, and Amherst College kind of in that middle, like people that move here, that's what, that's the vibrancy that, that they want to see. And, you know, if anything, you know, the, frankly, the, the building next door to what Barry's doing is now on the market for a price that I don't think they ever would have got if Barry didn't do the redevelopment that he, he did, right? It's listed for three point two million dollars. And that in the downtown, well, wait a second, you know, the archipelago on the other end, they, they pay real money for those buildings, and they put a lot of students in those buildings. So, I just hope that the board and, and Mr. Rosenthal with respect understands that there will be other sites, there will be other projects, and that this is going to be good for downtown because the college is looking to reinvigorate it, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. You know, one thing that had occurred to me is that when we have a project that is likely to be occupied by a bunch of UMass students, we can argue that, well, this saves them from taking over a bunch of private homes elsewhere in town. Uh, I'm not sure we can make that argument with this project. Um, you know, I don't know whether Amherst College, I, I don't think they send any of their students off campus, right? So, um, it's unfortunate that we can't at least have that benefit of this project. Now, maybe Amherst College is going to be renovating some dorms, and they want to swing the students out of those dorms into this area, sort of on a rotating basis for the next decade or something. I don't know. I can imagine that could be what's going on. So, you know, is there an indirect benefit to the town to have Amherst College renewing its core residential housing? Yes. If this is just allowing Amherst College to expand its student enrollment and avoid building a dorm and just leasing one, that seems a little less beneficial. But, uh, those are just a couple of thoughts. Um, Karen, I see your hand. Why don't you go ahead? And then I see that Ken Rosenthal raised his hand as well. So we'll let him, uh, have another word after you.
Yeah, I just want to quickly say, I, I do agree, Tom, with what you said, and I'm, I'm very grateful and happy that Amherst College is willing to invest. The trend that we, uh, just see in downtown is that the grownups, the families, the people with children are the ones that are giving up and leaving as more and more students fill the downtown, and that's the trend. That's very worrisome for us that I was in, and I, and I am as, uh, Ken Rosenthal, I'm grateful that we have Barry as a developer, and I'm, I'm sure glad that he's on this project. So I just want to clarify that.
All right, thanks, Karen. Pam, could you bring Ken back over? We'll give him, oh, yeah, go ahead, Ken.
Uh, Mr. Marshall, thank you again for the courtesy of letting me have another chance to talk. I, I do want to emphasize that my regard for Barry Roberts and for the management of Amherst College is very high. And it's not that that I'm concerned about. Amherst College does have students living in town in that Marsh House and Tyler House and Plimpton House and Porter House. These are old dorm, these are old fraternity houses that are used, uh, in town and, and for students, and they're here. It's the additional students that are displacing possibility of year-round residents who would like to live here. And in fact, as I mentioned this morning, uh, uh, with my call this morning, are looking for places to stay in town, don't want to leave town, and want to live here as adults, as retirement adults and, and, and as others. And that's what we should be asking the planning board to think about. Find ways to encourage that to happen. And so, sir, I say to you, yes, I understand why you may feel that you have to approve these things because there are some minor changes that don't affect Barry's ultimate change, but to turn them down is to send a signal to my good friend Barry Roberts and other developers that this is not what the planning board wants to see for the town, and to find other ways to use property in ways that make this town better. And, and again, Mr. Marshall, thank you for letting me have this second opportunity to speak to you and to the, and to the board. I want to say one more thing, Mr. Marshall. You are the only person who chairs a, a committee that tells us in advance who the visitors are, and that's very, very helpful to us who might want to speak, but would defer speaking if we knew somebody else was speaking on the subject. So you're, you are an efficient manager of this process, and I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Ken. Um, thanks for the kind words. Uh, I will, I, I do feel I need to clarify. The reason I said that we can't really turn down a site plan review is because statutorily, we can't turn a site, down a site plan review. It's not that we feel that, you know, I didn't say that because I feel like we're so far down the road. This is so minor, whatever, something more idiosyncratic, but it's actually statutorily basically impossible. We can impose conditions. Um, and I don't know what the limit of those conditions are, but, um, that, that, uh, is something- that that is something not everyone understands about the process. If this were a special permit, we could turn it down. All right. All right. So Bruce, I see your hand. Are you thinking the same thing I'm thinking? All right. Well, then, do you want to try to articulate it, or should I? You're still muted.
I think you should.
So I am sorry, I have, I did type up something. I can share my screen if we're looking at
Okay, Nate. It's always nice to look at something when you're
I don't know how visible that is. Is that?
That's highly visible. That's great.
So, you know, here's the a possible finding. I'm, you know, I don't know if there's any conditions other than changing the rental registration piece and then a motion.
Yeah, and then we'll need to vote to uh to close the public. Oh, yeah, you've got that there, too. All right, so. So why don't I, why don't I read the finding and then we can discuss whether we want to edit it and then we can vote on it and we'll do the same thing with the motion. Fred, I see your hand.
Um, just a little edit, maybe Nate, should the that sentence read or otherwise waived thereunder? Because the way that's written, it sounds like it it can happen either way. That's not true.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Fred. Okay, so findings. The board finds that this application meets the relevant criteria of section eleven point two four of the zoning bylaw and that the changes up to the site plan, management plan, and to the permit conditions are consistent with the site plan review approval SPR twenty twenty four dash zero five for the mixed-use development at forty five fifty five South Pleasant Street. All right. Anyone want to make a comment about that finding? Fred?
I think I should have said not otherwise waived thereunder. Sorry about that. Not otherwise waived.
Let's see. How many negatives can I keep in my head at once? Uh, if required by the rental registration bylaw.
Or unless waived there.
Yeah, I don't think we want a not. I don't think we want a not there. I think we just want
Unless waived there.
Yeah, that's fine.
Good.
Tom, I hope you'll raise your hand if you want to, if you have any issues with this word smithing.
Yeah, I'm I'm thinking through it and wondering if it's an an and or an or.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Nate, do you have the original language that we that follows this?
I do. I just, I don't have it in the
You don't have it in editable form?
No, if you give me a minute, I can, um, I'll start my sharing.
I think it'd be helpful to see it all together.
Yeah.
So that we can, you know. Jesse?
Isn't isn't the if doing what we're trying to accomplish, to take out that the middle clause, if required by the rental bylaw? Because if it's not, it's not required.
If not required, then there's no
I don't think you need that little phrase in the middle.
Yeah, I think you're, that sounds like you're right.
The the phrase is a little bit important for us. So if we could, I mean, I just, it it
Isn't
because I think, and I I'm not disagreeing with with you. I just think based on experience that sometimes if you don't say the next part, then
You want it to be written out that there is a possibility it could be waived.
Yes, correct.
We want to acknowledge that possibility.
Correct. So i- i- if required and unless waived, then so, right, so you take out the unless waived, right? So if required, here's what you're going to do, and unless it's waived, because that's the way to get away from having it be
I agree.
Okay. Nate, did we give you enough time to cobble it together?
Uh, I think so.
Talk amongst yourselves, right?
So if
Okay, great. If required by the rental registration bylaw and unless waived thereunder, the property shall
Should be the units at the property.
Yeah, the the units.
Or the units at the project.
The units at the project shall be registered and permitted in accordance with the Amherst residential Property Bylaw. Laws or suspension of a rental permit shall constitute a violation. All right, so that looks reasonable to me. Does anybody want to fiddle with it a little bit more? Okay. All right, so. All right, so then the motion on on approving the SPR will include the editing to these conditions. Is that right? That's part of the motion, not the, or it's just a the the motion actually for the conditions is that the revised conditions as drafted and presented at the meeting are acceptable with the exception of revise number nineteen, which needs to be edited as shown on screen here. Period. All right. And then move to approve SPR twenty twenty five dash five South Pleasant Street LLC forty five fifty five South Pleasant Street by approving the requested modifications to the previously granted site plan approval, yada yada, including changes to the site plan, management plan, and conditions with the findings as discussed and to close the public hearing. At what, shouldn't I say something like and conditions as proposed and subsequently edited in the meeting?
Revised.
Subsequently revised? Yeah, and revised in the meeting? At this, at the hearing. Yeah, that's good.
Uh, shouldn't the motion come before the conditions? We usually make the motion and to approve with the conditions as follows. So it's, I see it's all here, but the order doesn't, isn't, isn't conventional to me, to my way of thinking. Because the 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 revised condition nineteen is is subordinate to the motion which should precede it.
You're just talking about reversing the order on the page.
I mean, this is the way to come out with a decision, so I don't think it really matters, but it's, we just have to recognize that the order of things laid out here is unconventional.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, typically, though, we want to keep the hearing open to review conditions in case we need any new information. So, you know, you know, however they're presented in the decision, it's, you know, usually we keep the hearing open as we discuss conditions.
Okay, I'm good.
Okay, so Nate, we have one motion. And it seems to include the findings and the conditions, approval of the site plan review and to close the public hearing. So we need one vote. And Bruce, I'll assume your hand is just a legacy hand.
It's actually to second your motion. So assume it to be that until I, unless I change my voice.
All right, all right. So so I guess I'm making the motion as as written here on the page. Bruce has seconded. Is there any discussion by the board for this motion? Or is everybody all set to vote? I am not seeing any hands. All right. Well, Karen?
I just want to just make one comment that this part of town is one part of town which would be really attractive for people that are retired and people with children. The other part of town now has already so many students and bars and things like this. So it it does make me sad to lose this area, but not enough to stop it.
Okay, thank you, Karen. All right, I guess I will call for a vote. We'll go through the roll call. Lawrence is still abstaining from this discussion. So Bruce, we'll start with you.
I approve.
Fred?
I approve.
Jesse?
I approve.
Johanna?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
I am an aye as well. Six in favor, one member recusing himself. The motion passes. Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Barry. Good luck with your project and we hope you develop some more housing that is more attractive to the general population.
Thank you. More to come.
Bruce?
Doug, I respectfully, I'm I'm going to exit the meeting. I'm leaving the country tomorrow and I mistakenly anticipated that this would be a short meeting and I've got a lot of things that I haven't done yet. So I'll, there was a, there was a, there was a planning commission meeting, but I have nothing to report on it, at least not at this meeting, so I'll do that later. If you'll excuse me, I'll I'll see you in a month or so.
Okay, we will miss you.
Thank you.
The record show that Bruce left the meeting at eight fifty one. Board members, we have gone well past our usual break time. I think we don't have very much left to do. Are you all fine with just continuing on and finishing up rather than five, six, eight minutes later? Okay, all right, fine. So as I said, the time was eight fifty one. It's now eight fifty two. We'll move on. We got through all business, new business, Form A and our subdivision, I believe. Pam, upcoming ZBA applications. Anything to give us a heads up on?
Anything, Nate? Do you?
Uh, no, we know Wayfinders is moving through their forty B permitting process. Shoe Spray Road Solar will be coming back uh in November, but likely continue, you know, it'll be continued. It may actually be asked to be continued without testimony at that hearing. And I don't really know of anything else. Yeah.
That's fine. Doesn't have to be anything. Okay, planning board and committee and liaison reports. Jesse, is Housing Subcommittee continuing to meet?
Yep, we met uh two weeks ago, three weeks ago, two weeks ago. And a long discussion about the council discussion of the overlay and the article in the Gazette that was written about it. We were all, I think, a little taken aback by the, some of the responses. And we had debated, and I think I'm going to take a stab at writing a response to that response and maybe bring that to the board for opinions and maybe try and send it as a response in the Gazette, just as people, not necessarily the board. And we continued talking about how to bring a definition of student home through the board and then to the council. Hopefully, the discussion was mostly around whether we needed to bring such a definition with a purpose or if we thought it would ever fly without a purpose. And people thought, had various opinions on that. So we're still crafting that attempt.
All right. May I ask if you are making progress on your minutes?
Yes. So there was a set approved last time. There's a set that will be on the agenda for this coming one. And yeah, we're, we're
Okay.
We, meaning me, are getting better with Karen's help.
Okay, and Nate, are these being posted?
Yeah, so there, as a subcommittee, the planning board, if you go to the town's, and I'll say YouTube channel, and you go to the planning board playlist, they're embedded within that. So, you know, the three or four meetings of the Housing Subcommittee are all available online within the planning board playlist. So
You mean the recordings of the meeting?
Yes.
What about the minutes?
Oh, the minutes, yeah, I have to, um, I I have to figure where to put them. I think I have to create either a new you know, place on the internet, or they would just go under the planning board, but I'm, you know, yeah.
Yeah, since I'm not a member, I I would actually look at the minutes. So so that I have a clue of what's going on.
Yeah, there'll be links from the planning board webpage. You just have to set something up, you know, structurally on the, on the, you know, at our content manager side, how to do that, yeah.
Okay. All right, Bruce gave his his non-report for PVPC. Uh, I can tell you, I've started seeing a couple of emails about CPAC, even though I'm not a member. And that's something we still need to vote on. And I see in the agenda that this was the moment where we were going to talk about that. Has anybody had a change of heart and is now willing to be a CPAC member? Don't all raise your hands at once. Nate?
Yeah, you know, the the town manager asked if there would be a planning board representative. And so, you know, the CPA committee is a committee made up of representatives from other boards and committees and then at-large members. Um, and the planning board is one of a few statutorily named, you know, town boards or committees that would send a representative. And so, you know, we think it's really important to have it. We get it. It's extra meetings. You know, Doug did it last year. I will say that there are, there weren't an overwhelming number of proposals this year. Uh, I don't want to jinx it, but, you know, the, uh, it may reduce the number of meetings and kind of complexity of discussion in terms of funding. So, uh, you know, this this year might be different, you know, maybe different than last year and what would be different than next year. So
Lawrence, I see your hand.
Yeah, I'll I'll do it if somebody else wants to do it.
Well, that would be, that would be great because if you weren't, you know, if you weren't, I was probably going to have to do it again. I I can say that Nate Nate's correct. There are eleven applications this year. Most, probably half of them are from the town. Um, and if you're willing to do that, I think we should hurry up and vote for you. So, board members, any discussion of of nominating, recommending Lawrence as our liaison to the Community Preservation Act Committee?
Sorry, I was going to jump in. Lawrence, you can always ask Doug, too. You know, you guys can talk offline about his experience and you can reach out to myself or staff with any questions. We could, you know, go over it. So it's they haven't really met yet this year.
Yeah.
Those were due at the end of September and they're just, they were just
Yeah, I just saw them today.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I can forward you those emails. Okay, so board members, I think we should have a quick vote on 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 Lawrence. Because I think Paul Bakelmo will probably want us to have voted. Um, so I make him, I'm making a motion to appoint Larry Lawrence as the liaison to the CPAC committee. Anybody want a second? Karen? Okay, thank you. Any more discussion? No? All right, we'll go through the remaining members who are here. Starting with Fred.
Yeah, aye.
All right. All right, Jesse?
Aye.
All right, Johanna?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well, Lawrence?
Aye.
Thank you. And thank you for volunteering, I appreciate that. Okay, so Nate, if you can let the Town Manager know that we did, did do that, and hopefully he can quickly. You know, appoint Lawrence to that position, I think there's a letter involved. And let, let the Chair of the CPAC Committee know and, and have his email address so that he can start being on the distribution. All right, moving on, Karen, anything for Design Review Board?
No, we're meeting on the twenty-second, I believe.
Okay. Report of Chair, well, and time is nine o'clock. I guess. I guess I did wanna say, I think it's next, next meeting on October thirtieth. Which is a little unusual date for us, but it's because we skipped a meeting at the beginning of the month. We will be talking about the University Drive overlay. Jesse, I don't think you need to prepare a letter because. Probably Nate and I are gonna have to write a letter of. Report back to Town Council about our hearing on that subject anyway. But I do hope everyone thinks about what they wanna say in the hearing, I do. I, I suspect that there'll be some Town Council members that want to listen in to what we say. I do urge you to go back and listen to the Town Council discussion. I think Pam sent us the link to that recording and. The point at which that discussion started, I think, you know, an hour and fifty-two minutes into the meeting or something. So, please do, do that, that would be great. Jesse, I saw you, thought you maybe wanted to say something?
Yeah, I think we were thinking about putting out some kind of response before that. Open hearing, just to get more thoughts out in the ether.
I see.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying.
I see. I guess you're, I guess you're, you're gonna run out of time.
Right, yeah, I don't think.
And I'm not sure, kind of. Would, you know, whether that would be a personal letter from just.
Yeah, I, I wasn't, I don't think it was like, maybe the board will say something, it was just like.
Yeah.
Some of the opinions led to the overlay out there.
Yeah. Well, you could certainly write an op-ed and put it in the Gazette.
Yeah, that's, that's what we're really thinking, but again, I'm not sure.
Or you could, you know, submit it to one of the blogs in town, or both of them. There's plenty of places that would like to hear comments. Okay, so, I guess the only other thing I wanted to sort of ask and say, you know. I appreciate the work that Nate and Pam are doing. Particularly now that Chris has at least taken. A, a short vacation before she comes back as some sort of part-time post-retirement employee. I think they've got a lot on their hands and I appreciate them, their support. You know, I have a colleague at work who's on the Hadley Planning Board, and they have no staff. So, and they actually have no staff that receives applications. The, the first part of their meetings, applicants show up with their forms and they have to process that, and, you know, so. We've got it good, guys, don't forget that. All right, that's really all I was gonna say. I do, I, I guess I had one other thing I was gonna say, which is the Housing Subcommittee. I at least feel a little bit left out. And, and, and I, and I, I know I don't really wanna go to additional meetings, but. I'm, I have wondered if whether our workload was light enough to seg, to set out time in our regular meetings for those discussions. And, you know, tonight was, tonight certainly looked like it would be a pretty light meeting. We managed to fill it. And that's often the case. But I guess I would like to just have people think about whether. You know, that, whether that might be worth trying for a while. So, Jesse?
I was quickly commenting that, I think that'd be great, I mean, you know, again, the reason we formed the Subcommittee was it didn't seem like these topics could get to the full board with regular, regularity.
How long, how long have your meetings been?
Only, only an hour.
Only an hour, so if we manage.
Time constraints. But again, if, if minutes, you know, would help, of course we'll get more on that.
You know, at that, but that way, you know, if we combine them, then there's just.
That's fantastic.
You guys don't have to, to do that and, and it's just part of the regular business.
Absolutely. We all welcome that.
Okay. So, so Nate, maybe as we look ahead on our agenda. We should think about whether we can carve out some time for that.
Yeah, I think, you know, if we wanna segue to Report of Staff, I think that would be good. The, I was gonna say that, you know, November, or October thirtieth is the public hearing for the proposed, you know, University Drive overlay. There will be a November sixth meeting of the Planning Board and then, you know, subsequent meetings, so. You know, there's a few other projects coming up possibly. And then there's the ADU bylaw, right, so the state changed, you know, accessory dwelling units and we need to change our bylaw. It's something that the Planning Board should start looking at, we should, you know, we could make one or two simple changes. Or we could make a few additional changes, it should be ready by February twenty-five, so. Something staff will work on and probably bring to the Planning Board in November. That, you know, there's some changes to that bylaw, so. The state hasn't really come out with. Some of the nitty-gritty details, technical aspects, I think we're just gonna have to have in our bylaw and then, you know, see what happens. You know, for instance, we allow ADUs bigger than what the state defines, so the recommendation is that could be considered a local ADU. And then there's an ADU by state definition. And so a property that already has a quote "local" ADU is then also allowed by right to add a state ADU. And, you know, we can't have an owner occupancy requirement or, you know, some regulations related to parking are over, overly, you know. Overly regulate that ADU in terms of dimensional standards or standards and conditions, so. You know, you can have more than one ADU on a property, so there's things that, you know, I think the Planning Board can discuss with that. You know, then, you know, talking about ESAM or so other areas to rezone, I think, you know, the, I think even when this, you know, forty-five, fifty-five South Pleasant was being discussed, you know, the payment in Lew was discussed and. You know, what would happen there and how the trust could use it and whether or not we wanted the affordable units. You know, I think it's a really important discussion to have, you know, where do we want students? You know, I think students bring a lot to where they are, right, they can bring disposable income, they have guests, they have family, they, you know, will shop and dine downtown or wherever they live, and so. You know, I think part of the discussion the Housing Subcommittee has been having, you know, is okay if we can zone or allow student housing somewhere. Or whether it's more just, you know, multi-unit development, are there other regulations or policies that could help. Guide development in other parts of town, and so, you know, the comprehensive housing market study mentioned having, you know, kind of this. Multi-pronged approach, and I think it's something we're ready to have, so that can be discussed, we started it, you know, last year. In terms of other things, I, I don't wanna say, you know, the Housing Production Plan is underway, there's a survey, I think that's gonna go live soon in terms of. I'm asking about housing need and demand, the downtown design standards is still moving forward, there's a visual preference survey that's available online for anyone to take. There'll be, I think on November twenty-first or somewhere around there, there will be a pretty big workshop about the streetscape. And so Dodson and Flinker will be presenting more information about what they see in terms of streetscape design. And recommendations, and so, you know, there's a webpage for that, I know there's other things happening, but those, you know, those two are big ones.
Well, Nate. You know, you've, you've mentioned a number of things that are sort of. I'll call it regulatory or sort of overarching process. That are coming. Is there a lot in terms of specific project applicant, applicants that you're aware of? I know earlier we talked about, you know, upcoming this, that, and the other thing. And it didn't seem like there was very much. But does it seem like it's gonna be a busy season for us, from an applicant point of view?
You know, there's the high school track and field is a site plan review, you know, they're, they're going to put a new track and field in. So that's coming forward, there's another preliminary subdivision plan for four twenty-two Amity Street. To possibly freeze the zoning there, depending on what happens with the overlay. I think there's one other site plan review application, I mean, I don't see those as, you know, being too extensive, so.
Okay, all right, well, so maybe there'll be some opportunity to have some, some housing discussion.
Yeah, and I think for some of those hearings, so in November, if we wanted to, you know, even say the high school track and field is. A hearing, I mean, I would be okay with saying, you know, we're only gonna talk about it for an hour and a half one night. Just to give ourselves time to talk about something else and we can just continue it to a date certain, and I'm, you know, as opposed to having that take up the, the full meeting, we could, you know, really. We don't time items, but we could have that kind of decision, and I, you know.
Yeah, I think that's worth trying. You know, maybe we can wrap some things up sooner if we don't have open-ended. You know. Okay, so that includes, that was your staff, staff report?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know Pam, if you have anything else, I'm trying to think of anything, but.
I think you did a really good job of just cap, capturing everything we've been talking about. Yeah, we miss Chris, can say that.
She's unfortunately come back to Town Hall to say hi.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, well, unless anybody has anything else they wanna say, the time is nine-ten and I think we can adjourn. It sounds like we won't have. Bruce back for at least three weeks, so he'll probably miss the meeting on the thirtieth. And maybe the meeting on the sixth, it sounds like.
Yeah, he, he had mentioned at one point, I thought, that given the time difference, he might be able to attend.
Yeah, well, we, we can keep our fingers crossed, but I'm not gonna. I'm not sure I would come to our meeting if I was headed to Australia. But I think it's more unusual for me than for him. Okay, time is nine-eleven and good night, everyone, thank you for your time and your service.
Doug, you too, good night.
Good night.
That's my recording.
Good night, good night Pam.
Good night, Mr. Marshall, thank you for everything.
Recording stopped.
Goodbye.
Bye, see you soon. Bye, see you soon.